Yeah. Like five of them, I think. I read it.
Calling our commission meeting to order at nine oh one A M. This time we have our prayer and pledge.
Spell for our prayer and remain standing afterward for the pledge of allegiance. Father God, I speak your blessing, your grace, and your protection over these commission members who have devoted great time and great effort to serving the community of Lynn Haven. I speak your blessing and protection over their families as they serve and as they're absent from their families. As they make decisions on our behalf, I speak wisdom and discernment to the decisions they make. Thank you for our city employees that faithfully labor for the citizens of Lynn Haven. Bless them in their work. We give thanks to our police and our fire personnel. Bless them, keep them safe, and protect them as they daily keep us safe and stand between us and those who would harm us. I speak this over every city official and worker in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time the floor is open for public commentary. Being that there's no commentary, we move on to the mayor's report. We have our proclamation this morning for the Reefs Across America Day, which is this Saturday. Whereas, members of the Reefs Across America Bay County are proud to partner with the city of Lynn Haven and the Reefs Across America, a nonprofit organization with a mission to remember, honor, and teach about the service and sacrifices of our nation's veterans, recognizing the courage and sacrifices of U.S. veterans by placing wreaths on the graves of the fallen during the holiday season. And whereas, Reefs Across America began in two thousand and six as an offshoot of the Arlington National Cemetery Wreath Project, which started in nineteen ninety-two with the annual placement of wreaths donated by a Rochester Wreath Company. And whereas, today the reef-laying ceremonies are made possible by the generous commitment of Rochester Wreath Company of Heriting, Maine, which donates tens of thousands of wreaths for the nationwide observance each year. And whereas, last year, members of the public sponsored the placement of more than two-point four million wreaths on headstones at three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven participating locations around the country in honor of the service and sacrifices made for our freedoms, with each name said out loud. And whereas, the theme this year is Find a Way to Serve in two thousand and twenty-two and beyond. And whereas, on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven A M., Reefs Across America Bay County and Friends is partnering with Reefs Across America to help lay wreaths at My Hope Cemetery and Lynn Haven Community Cemetery. Now therefore, I, Jesse Nelson, Mayor of the City of Lynn Haven, Florida, do hereby proclaim December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two throughout the city of Lynn Haven, Florida, as Reefs Across America Day. And as said, everyone join me in supporting this worthwhile project. And whereof, and witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and call the city of Lynn Haven to be affixed this thirteenth day of two thousand and twenty-two.
Let's just make an adjustment on that time. It really starts at nine o'clock. Don't scare to the people. Thank you.
In regards to my report, we'll keep it brief. Youth Council is not meeting today to have semester exams. Prepare for that this week, so I've asked them to not meet today and focus on their academics and making good grades on those final exams because you do have to have a certain GPA to be a part of the youth council, so want to keep them focused on what's important for sure, which is their schoolwork. But they did meet last first meeting, our last month's meeting, which was our one and only meeting last month. I had a chance for Mr. Ryan Stray, community activist. He came in and spoke with him about his local business ventures with Keep it Lynn Haven L L C, and it's about his social media presence and how they, as young people, can be certainly active on social media as well as engaging with the city in non-governmental ways. And so he was the guest speaker, and then he was also the sponsor for lunch at Poe Folks. And so it was a real nice time to speak with him and to hear from him and for them to engage with someone who is a local resident here in the city of Lynn Haven, who's, you know, new to the area but has certainly came in and shown a great love for our city and supporting of it. So it's really good for them to meet with him. Also, they also had a float in the parade. They were at the end of the line there, but they did have, they did have a float in the parade, so that was really cool. They had Mayor Sharon Sheffield with them as well. They were escorting her in the parade there, so they really enjoyed that time and that opportunity to participate in our Christmas parade. And so we had a great Christmas lighting ceremony, for those of you that were able to come out, and a great concert following, as well as a great Christmas Day parade the next day. So it was really, really fun. I've had a chance to attend a few basketball games these past few weeks. The girls really get after it when they're out there, and so Mosley Girls did very well against Bay High. And our Bay Haven Charter Academy girls, they actually won county championships. I had a chance to go and watch that game and watch them win their first county championship for the girls team. And so that was really, really exciting. I'm sure like all of us have been working with the city manager and staff to try to bring resolution to various issues that are of concern to our citizens, and so been working on that as well and had a happy Thanksgiving. I know we haven't met since that time as far as a formal commission meeting, so had a happy Thanksgiving. Have not received much feedback on the changes that we discussed in regards to the referendums for the charter review. Of course, we'll discuss that a little bit later, so really didn't get much feedback on that. So that's my brief report for the day. Commissioner Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's going to be brief as well. I did enjoy all of the Christmas festivities that we've had going on the last couple of weeks. It's amazing to see the growth that we're experiencing at all of our events. It's like every year that goes by, we're breaking records on the attendance numbers on our parades and on our events, so I think that's awesome. I want to thank our city employees for handling those events because I know it's not easy. It's a lot of work when the rest of us are having fun and watching a parade. Many of them are working, and I understand that, so a big shout out and a thank you to all of you guys and your families. Then I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Everybody, enjoy yourselves, enjoy your family, enjoy the season, and try to get some rest and relaxation over the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Aldrich. Commissioner Perno?
Not much to report, Mayor. Thank you. Thank everybody for being here. Thank our first responders and our city employees. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I just have another meeting today with the St. Joe Bay, St. Andrew's Bay Astoria Program. I don't know if you saw on the news last night, they just got a one-point-three-million-dollar grant, and we'll be going over that. With that said, I just want to say again, you know, I think, thank you, Frank. Your blessing was right on point today, so God bless and have a great holiday.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Last week I attended the F D O T District Three meeting virtually. They had it, I believe it was in Chipley, and it's pretty much made up of all of northwest Florida. It's about seventeen counties, and they go over each county as far as what projects are going on between fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-eight. And when they got to Bay County, I was hoping to see something about the three-ninety expansion. It wasn't on there. So when they got the public commentary, I asked about it, and they said, "Thank you for your comments," and they said they would get back with me, which they did. Next day or two, I got an email saying that they already had plans to expand three-ninety between seventy-seven and two-thirty-one in July of two thousand and twenty-three. And I was talking to Commissioner Perno about it. I don't know if you want to add anything to it, but I'm sure that'll probably get pushed out a little bit.
Well, they're gonna, that's the resurfacing will start in July of twenty-three, and then right after the resurfacing, the whiting project will go on.
Right.
And they're fortifying the intersections now as they resurface. That's all we know to this point, and we're just glad it's back in the five-year work program. Yeah. That's part of the resurfacing project. Yeah. They're going to make that tiny bridge bigger right before Bay Haven out there. But you know, that's about all I know as well, and I'm just glad it's happening. So it'll be a great, it'll be a great throughfare for people, and it'll come right through Lynn Haven from two-thirty-one.
And the other thing they pointed out specifically for Lynn Haven was the sidewalk for Tennessee, so I was glad to see that. The Christmas parade, yeah, I had a blast at the Christmas parade. If you didn't see Cousin Eddie made an appearance, and I really enjoyed it. A lot of people were laughing, making comments, and it was just nice to get out there and just have a lot of fun. Some people stopped and took some pictures with me, which was a lot of fun. And then I, before that, I went to the Winter Wonderland where they had all the businesses and places to eat and that out here in Sheffield Park, and it was just packed, so that was a lot of fun. And then with the Reefs Across America, yeah, I would encourage everyone to please go out there. It's a very sobering experience. It's just a great way to remember our veterans. And just a little bit of history, I think I said this last year, what's the name of that cemetery?
Mount Hope.
Mount Hope Cemetery has actually got a gentleman by his last name Schnell, and he was the Spanish-American War Camp Commander when I was here in Lynn Haven. Used to be where there used to be a pharmacy there, and it was given to the camp, and now it's the Masonic Lodge. And then he was also VFW post commander when there used to be a VFW post here in Lynn Haven when they transferred over to that. So just a little bit of history, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Tender?
It's been a very interesting two weeks. That's a gentle way of putting it. I have talked to Attorney Obos about item number sixteen, I believe. Is that it?
Twenty.
Twenty, where we'll be voting on engineers for an upcoming project. And I did ask him if I should sustain because one of the companies that is getting voted on, my daughter happens to date the local manager, and I don't want to do anything unethical, so he's going to give me an email saying that. And I just feel very strongly about that, so I wanted to say it here to let everybody know. He says there's no issue. So I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I think the New Year's going to bring in all kinds of new things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to divert my time to doing some recognitions and some other updates. First recognition is the presentation of the City of Lynn Haven twenty-five-year longevity award to two very dedicated people. The first one is Sergeant Patrick Hamilton, if you will come forward with Chief Ramey. And we want to recognize your years of service to the city. I just want you to know this is a great sergeant. He loves the city a long time here at the City of Lynn Haven, and we just want to say how proud we are of you. Thank you very much. Our second longevity award goes to Ramona Bibbs. And Ramona, as you know, is our supervisor for the animal shelter. Ramona, if you'll come forward. It takes a special person to work at an animal shelter, and her supervisor is Ty Ferris. Ramona loves animals, and she always has the best interest and heart for the animals and for the city of Lynn Haven. And Ramona, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for your longevity here at the city of Lynn Haven. We appreciate you. And Ty just told me that's a hundred and seventy-five dog years. Next, we will have the swearing-in of five of our officers, and I'll ask that Chief Ramey, please come forward now.
I'm sorry for the crowded space. I'm sorry for the crowded space. We've actually, some of these employees have been with us a little over a year, but due to COVID and other issues, not everyone has had the opportunity to be publicly sworn in. This is Officer Kevin Stone, Gracie Brock, Lena Havelcheck, Officer Ron, Payden, and Officer Martin. Some of them come to us with experience, some come right out of the academy, but I'm very excited for all of them. They have family here. I actually was going to allow them to introduce their family, so if you'll just take a few seconds, I'll let each one of them do so.
That's my mom and my son, right over there.
So I come from a big law enforcement family. My mom is right there, my dad, my grandparents are on that side, then I have my two instructors, Brandon and Scott, and I got a few friends here, and my older brother's in the back. I've got my mom, who's also law enforcement, and then my dad right here.
My family couldn't make it today, but they're watching the livestream. My dad, my son. Love you too.
My mom came. She's right here with my girlfriend, and one of my work family from my old job is here also.
I came today with my wife, Sarah. She's tucked in in the back, back there by the doorway. Go ahead and wave. It's okay.
Without further ado, raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the government of the United States and the state of Florida that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of a Lynn Haven police officer on which I am about to enter. I apologize. When I say "I," you will state your name. I, your name, a citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America being employed by or an officer of the Lynn Haven Police Department and a recipient of public funds as such employee or officer I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida. Welcome aboard. We also have a penning ceremony. We've had a promotion, so you guys are excused, and some of you can go get back in bed. I would like Corporal Corey Midyet to come forward with his wife, and I also want his grandfather and his grandmother to come up. His grandfather worked with me for many years, and he's retired. He's not F W C. He'll tell you, he's a game warden. We lost a corporal, Corporal Radcliffe, to the Florida Highway Patrol, and during that timeframe, Corey was mentioned to me by multiple department heads. He had served in the Patrol Division. He had a couple of years at Parker. I think you're working on seven years' experience, and it was unanimous among the command staff that we promote Corey to the rank of corporal. And he came out of investigations after two years. So I'm very excited for you, Corey. I'm very excited for you, Lieutenant, and your beautiful bride, but at this time, I would like you to pin him, please, and don't stick him. And I just want to say congratulations. We look forward to great things.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the warrant list update by Kiki Roman.
Good morning. Do you have questions about the warrant list? Thank you.
Next, we'll have the stormwater update, and that will be by Chris Lightfoot.
Good morning. Given all of you a copy this morning, we'll run through it real quick. Just currently, our ditch digging contractor is well underway. He's working throughout the city. Didn't have a chance to incorporate it into the presentation, but he's up to eleven thousand six hundred feet so far. That's the most important part. I mean. Kind of heartbreaking.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
Yeah, thanks.
City manager, we should have saved all that for the end. Commissioner Ward was excited when he saw those cars.
Way to clear it out, Chris.
We're going to have an echo now. All good. So continuing on with the Nineteenth Street, Montana Avenue box culvert, like I said at the last meeting, everything is in. Contractor has been under the weather, so they've been off the site for several days, but everything is in place. Only thing lacking is the reshaping of the ditch and getting the lime rock and asphalt in to finish that project up and open the road back up. Seventh Street drainage improvements is well underway. Very minor hiccups on this project. It's been going way smoother than, I think, than we anticipated in the contractor. It's pretty deep, but moving right on along, and it's just right up the road here, if you want to drive by and see that one. This one is pretty neat. It's concrete canvas. We found this product at a conference, and we're demoing it today on East Tenth Street. They're actually installing it as we speak, just in between Minnesota Avenue and Indiana Avenue, so if any of you want to leave the meeting when you get done and ride by there, it's a pretty neat process, and that, it comes in rolls, yeah, East Tenth Street, and it comes in rolls like carpet, and you roll it out, you screw it together, and then you wet it, and it hardens in twenty-four hours, and just like concrete, and within twenty-eight days, it will be its full strength. Yeah, we've got a hundred people out there, it looks like, but that will be, this is stolen off their website, this picture here, but that's what it will look like. Going to try it out on this little section of ditch and see how we like it and how it holds up, and hopefully start incorporating that into the budget in the next several years and doing that throughout. It will cut down on mowing and digging the ditches, so it will be cost-effective to move forward with that if it works out. A bunch of in-house pipe replacements. Currently, we have about twenty-four open work orders that our pipe crew is working on. This was a picture taken off Alabama Avenue, the ten-hundred block earlier this, or last week. They had about two-hundred feet there to replace, so we'll never get caught up with this, but they are making some serious headway in getting some of this pipe replacement done. If you'll see in the picture, too, a lot of the old pipe that was used throughout the city was the old metal culverts that, just because of saltwater and groundwater, they rust out, don't last long. We have swapped over to the A D S pipe, and you see the fabric there in the pictures. You lay that fabric down and then backfill the dirt to keep it from floating because the groundwater is so high here. In other places, too, they make bands that go over and anchor down in the ground with some serious cases of floating issues. Other notable projects we have going on, our dredging slash outfall project, we reviewed the sixty percent plans two weeks ago. We'll be dredging the areas that we can, cleaning out areas we can with excavation, and found several places that are the outfalls that we'll be replacing outfall piping, so we'll get that going. Shouldn't have the hundred percent plans, hopefully by the end of January, and continue on with the permitting process on that one. The East Side Regional Pond, our preliminary plans are due the twentieth of this month. Hopefully bring in some preliminary stuff just for you to look at in January's update and kind of moving forward with that one. And then our H M G P construction, the commission is set to award those engineering contracts today, and looking forward to getting those started. The maintenance map, I didn't have a chance to update it. I got the list back from our ditch digging contractor, but again, it's just our baseline of what we work off through the fiscal year. Any questions?
Can you go back to the concrete canvas? So how expensive is that stuff?
So the roll that we've got for East Tenth Street today is about nine thousand dollars, including the freight. The freight in it is about thirteen hundred bucks. It's heavy, which is why it costs so much to get here.
Right.
But it's much cheaper than actually forming up and pouring concrete versus the roll.
So
Yes, per square foot.
They give you an estimate how long it lasts for?
The estimate now, they're saying it lasts just as long as concrete. That's really what we want to see, want to see really, you know, mowing around it, does it get eaten up? Anything, you know, getting up under it and undermining it? You know, you have, you bring it up out of the trench just like this and then tow it in, and any chance of water running off and getting up under it, you know, could compromise it. So that is where you trench it in and make sure. The technical guy from Concrete Canvas is there guiding the installation with our employees. That's another cost benefit is you don't have to pay a contractor to install it. We actually install it in-house, so it lays, it lays and overlaps, and then you screw it down as you go, and then soak it, and like I said, within twenty-four hours, it starts hardening.
I don't know if we looked at this, but do we have any idea how long it'd take to recover the cost of that versus having to clean the ditches all the time?
So I haven't put any numbers to it. I can, this ditch here in particular, like, we can dig this ditch, and within three months, it is full again. It's one of our biggest headaches in the city, and a lot of the runoff from here and the resident there at Tenth and Michigan, whose house has flooded before, is because of this ditch. is because of this ditch. It backs up and just can't drain fast enough for the stormwater. So hopefully doing this will alleviate any issues of the sediment buildup in this ditch.
I hope it works out. Thanks.
And you figure our ditch contractors at $3 a foot, I think this is 170 foot of ditch, so it's, you know, what, $320 every time he digs it? Or if we have to go back and dig it, plus mowing it, so it definitely wouldn't take long to reap the cost benefits there.
Okay, thank you.
Could you speak into the market floor commission?
The trench on 7th Street? So he asked, was the trench on 7th Street filled in? So where they were working, last time you saw it probably was, but they're moving on. I mean, and that's a deep enough trench there. They're working with trench boxes and doing all that because it is a, it's deep over there.
Thank you.
Now a couple of updates that you've asked us for. The first update is the Lynn Haven Library project. We brought this to you a couple of months back and made some tweets to it. Mike McDonald is the architect on this project and we want to get this project on the move. So we wanted you to like, to see where we were and hopefully within the new year, this project will be put out to bid and move forward.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vicki. I'm Bill Perry with Mike McDonald's. Just wanted to come today and give you an update. What you have before you is just a refresher of what we presented to you a number of months back. That was the finalization of the floor plan and elevations. The project has been designed. A lot of effort went into the layout of the facility, as you can see on it, and I thought maybe it'd be beneficial for you to have a copy to take with you going forward in case people were asking you about it. But we've got a nice lounge area and a reading podium area. You can see all of the elevations to give you a look at what, from an interior perspective, the library would look like and then from an exterior standpoint. I think there's one more, yeah. So the exterior over here on the side, we're keeping with the theme of the rest of the campus area here. We're using the concrete insulating form exterior walls, which is a more robust wall system like you're having built on your city hall facility as well. And so that's what we've been developing. Once you guys approve that, we move forward and developed our mechanical, electrical, plumbing and structural drawings. And we have that pretty much at, at final review stage. Those plans have been provided. I think we have about a 65-page set of drawings that's been provided to city staff to review. We'll incorporate those final comments and then be prepared to put it on the streak when you guys are ready to do so. A few things that need to happen. We did not have the civil site design work that was to be done by the consultant that's doing the overall campus stormwater drainage system. And so before a development order can be obtained, we'll need to have, you know, that final set of civil plans that could be put with our set to go for development order and building permit. In addition to that, the stormwater permit that accounts for this facility and any utility permit that would be needed for, you know, connecting our sewer and water systems would need to occur. So that, that before we actually go to bid with it is something that would need to occur. And so that's kind of where we are with it now. We'll await city staff comments and implement those. And then it will be ready at what point in stage you guys are ready to bid it.
I remember, I think I remember when we, when you presented this to us previously in a workshop, it talked about maybe some type of awning or connector between the library and this building here. Is that something that's not in this plan or is that something that can't be done in the plan?
Yes, sir. So we did talk about it being something that could be considered. We were not directed to move forward and put that in, but it's, it's available. We have the door there that's set up to where you can extend that walkway right on over and build that canopy component.
We can incorporate that into. What is the current cost of the library?
So you guys know that costs are very volatile now. I would tell you that this is probably going to be on order of 1.6 million. I would have told you several years ago that it would probably be around 1.2 million, but under the current environment and realistically, I think you're looking more on the order of 1.6 million.
How long do you think it will take once you start?
It's very accomplishable in a year's time, but can be condensed, I mean condensed, you know. Really what drives that is, is, you know, if you shorten that time too much, then you can start driving cost up. So you want to be careful with that and with the procurement issues that we're dealing with today relative to getting steel and things like that to the job site. I would be cautious about reducing it. Now what, you know, what kind of time would it take normally to construct? I mean, I think physical construction can occur in about six months, but when you factor in materials and all of those types of things, I would be cautious to put it in at any less than a year.
One of the people, one of the comments that all the senior citizens are asking me, and just, I just had one last Friday. How many books, actual pick up, hold and read books are we gonna have available? I see you have the shelving units and I see one, two, three, four, five.
The original total came back to over 15,000 books. It actually came from one of your folks that we were dealing with in the beginning.
So we'll have them in here, 15,000?
That's what he, that was the number that was said.
That's the answer I'm gonna start giving. 15,000 books will be in there.
We have any idea what was in the old library?
Oh, it was probably many, probably, I don't know.
And I think, I think you were the gentleman that I made this comment to last time we talked about it because I know I've seen these before. But I've also been told that it takes a particular kind of shelf to be out away from the wall that will hold up. So I want to make sure that we don't build it and next year have to replace all the shelving. Have you looked into that?
We'll, and I'll have to go back and check with our architects about the shelving itself as far as whether it is part of the furnishing that we're specifying. I know a lot of the fixed cabinetry and shelving and so forth, we actually have drawn up on the plans, but I'm not sure. Those are mobile units out in the larger area.
Yeah, they were telling me that the mobile units so that they can be moved with the, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That they will bow within a year. They'll go to the mid, but I'm just, I just want us to look into that.
I'll definitely pass that along and make sure that we get some, some good feedback on that. Perhaps we can track down a library or two that have a similar cabinetry installed and see what their experiences have been with them.
Do we have any concerns with the increased cost as far as being covered with FEMA insurance or anything like that?
So this particular project, because they knew it would be covered totally under insurance, will not be covered under FEMA. But from the insurance part of it, we actually got about 1.6 million dollars back from the insurance on, on the building, the former library.
For this?
Yes, for this.
So, so no concerns with the increased cost then? Okay.
And why wouldn't FEMA cover it? I mean, we had a huge library.
Yeah, we had a huge library, but after they did their calculations, they were only going to give us, I think it was like 945,000 dollars down. That's, that's all that they were gonna give us and so they reduced it to zero.
I'm not 100% expert on that too, but I think that FEMA kicks in after insurance as well, so that may be part of it.
Yeah, that, the, the number that they gave us was zero. So, you know, we won't get, because you can't double dip.
Right, don't you think that had something to do with, we did nothing to protect that old library?
No, they had nothing.
It had nothing to do with that?
No, nothing to do. They only look at numbers. I mean, they look at what's been there, what we're building now. And by the time they calculated into the insurance, they said insurance is gonna cover everything. So there's no reimbursement here for us.
So basically insurance becomes the prime.
That's exactly right. Yes, yes.
Just like with our personal things, if you had personal insurance, like, you know, homeowner's insurance and things FEMA, if you did get along, they wanted their money back. Or SB wanted their money back just to give you something to cover until then, so similar situation. So we're not gonna get a profit after, after the library is done.
That's exactly right. Or we wind up paying it back and we do not want to pay any money back.
Any additional questions regarding the library project? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one, the other update that you've been asking us about or some, some grants that we've gone after, particularly Florida Avenue. And I have with us Integrity Group, Darryl Cox is gonna give you an update on those as well.
We've got a short little few slides. He's working on it. There we go. Got it, yeah, thanks. So my name is Darryl Cox with the Integrity Group. I've been working with Ben Jenke and Michaela Clayton on the pursuit of some federal grants. And then we're almost to the point where we'll be working on kind of the management and compliance of those federal grants. Just, so a quick reminder of kind of what's been awarded so far. We've got three grants. The first is a infrastructure grant under the CDBG DR program related to Hurricane Michael. 5.2 million dollars for West 10th Street drainage improvement. And these are all 100% grants with no match, no local match. And then two, under the HRP program, hometown revitalization, Florida and Ohio corridor improvements, 4.3. And then the Minnesota and Mosley sidewalks for 1.1. So this is kind of where we are here in the process. We're very close to finally getting to get moving on the project itself. We went through the application period. I can't explain exactly why, but it, it's been taking quite a while for DEO to score the grants. This last round of funding, it took a year, give or take a few days, but for them, once we submitted an application, for them just to score it and then get to the award process. If it looks like you're going to get an award, they'll come and do a site visit. We've completed those on all three projects and they've, they've made the official award notice. Then there's another kind of delay in them getting the sub-recipient agreements, which we now have finally signed all three of those. And now we're working on actual project execution. So the, the big part of, I guess, the beginning of project execution is doing the environmental review. And we have to go through, and this next slide actually explains a little bit better, go through this kind of flow chart here, but basically all we're doing is we're determining, does the project need a full environmental assessment or is it categorically excluded? So just kind of doing a quick review, obviously we're doing some, some pretty major construction and renovations on the infrastructure, the West 10th Street, as well as the Ohio and Florida Avenue corridor improvements. But the sidewalks, we determined was categorically excluded. So where we are with those, this is, we're not gonna go through all of this, but this is the environmental review checklist for HUD-funded CDBG DR projects. So we're in the middle of this. We're contacting state historic preservation office. Michaela actually has the letters that the mayor signed Friday or yesterday. Those should go out today. We have a few other letters that my staff is gonna send out to Fish and Wildlife. There's another DEP, the clearinghouse letter. So we're, we're getting all of these out and they should all be out before the end of the year. Each one of those has a, a deadline to respond and let us know if there's any sort of further consultation that needs to happen. Most of them are 45 to 60 days, if they take that long. Sometimes they'll respond quicker. So once we have all of their responses, then we can put together a public notice. We believe that there'll be a finding of no significant impact, you know, based on the location of these projects and what's happening. So then we public notice that. Then we, right after that, public notice that we're gonna be officially requesting the funding that we've been awarded. And kind of simultaneous to those last few things, DEO has already approved the RFQs for engineering on all three. We can release those and get, actually get some, get some real traction and movement on these projects. This year, I just kind of wanted to show you that as much as it feels like this has been an incredibly long process, and it has, that we're not really behind. You can see that actual drawdowns of funding has happened in the housing program, which is led by DEO. That's not something that's done through any cities or counties. And then of course, DEO has been funding themselves through some of the administrative costs. But in none of the other programs, the home buyouts, the workforce recovery, HRP, infrastructure, no other cities or counties have gotten to that point of drawdown yet. So, you know, we're working with city of Springfield as well. We're kind of in partnership with Bay County, so we're all in about the same place that we're getting very, very close. It should be breaking ground on some of these projects very soon. Any, any questions for me?
I do. I'm an old lady, so I forget things. Weren't you here, when did you come originally and weren't you with two or three other gentlemen when we got this proposal from Integrity?
Most likely, yes. We've, we've been here before.
Yes, okay. And what percentage do you get of that money? I remember there was a scale.
So within each one of those, there is a set aside for administrative costs of 5%.
5%?
And our contract is not necessarily just the 5%, 5%. Because you can't, it's 2 CFR 200, it's a kind of a federal rule, federal policy, that our fees can't be contingent on receiving the federal funding. However, we still have that, that sort of understanding that we're only going to bill you up to 5% of those projects.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to give an update, Mayor, because we know lots of people were asking about that. But anytime you deal with grants, federal money, you're gonna go through all of these processes. We had to go through this with FEMA, the EHP review for all of our projects. And it held us up. These are just things you have to go through and there are no if and buts about it. But we'll get there because it is grant money. They want to do their due diligence as well. And that is my report.
Thank you. And we've seen all the other things that the city has done, so we've gotten the other report about Christmas and Christmas parade and.
All of those great things, yes.
So thank you to, thank you to you and the staff for, for making Christmas a festive time for us over these past few weeks, so we certainly appreciate it. a festive time for us over these past few weeks, so we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Uh, just one, I, I handed out a brief outline on, um, gift laws, and I talked to Vicky a couple of weeks ago, and she thought maybe it's a good time with the holidays coming up, people start bringing, you know, gift baskets and hams and turkeys, or whatever it is to you guys, to kind of, uh, do a little recap of that, and obviously, this is something that you guys go over in your annual ethics training anyway, so, uh, I gave this outline, hopefully streamlined it a little bit, but just really a reminder, um, on, on gift laws, I mean, obviously, don't ask for anything, don't solicit gifts, um, if you think it's being done to influence a vote or a decision. Um, you also can't accept, um, any gifts, or have your spouse or children accept any gifts when you know or should know it's being done to influence a vote or a decision. Um, the big thing to look at, obviously, is, um, you know, lobbyists, um, vendors and political action committees, uh, those are required to report, um, and th, those gifts are prohibited if they're over a hundred dollars, so in between that twenty-five and a hundred dollar threshold, um, those categories of, of entities or people, um, there's really a prohibition, um, on that. Now, can just somebody out of the goodness of their heart, who's not trying to influence a vote, and who's, who's not a lobbyist, not a vendor, can they give you a two hundred and fifty, or we put it here, you know, they can give you a million dollar gift, and that's fine, um, if it's not being done to influence your vote, and you report it if it's over a hundred dollars. Um, don't get that confused with, um, y, you know, like I say, Christmas presents from family and from relatives, that, that's not, you don't have to report that. So, I mean, just because you guys are elected officials and vote, doesn't mean you, uh, can stop opening Christmas presents this year. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to get this outline in front of you, 'cause I know that's that time of year when people do start, and then, you do have to kind of look and say, look, are they a lobbyist? Obviously, a lobbyist is somebody who gets paid to influence votes. I don't know that we have a lot of, a lot of registered lobbyists, um, around here in Lynn Haven, uh, but we do certainly have a lot of vendors, and so, if a vendor wants to give you a gift basket or something like that, you know, be sure, um, you look at the, the dollar value. Don't ask, certainly don't ever ask for a gift, um, from vendor, but if, if they wanna give you, uh, you know, something for the holidays, uh, that's fine, if it's, if it's under the hundred dollars. If something wants, you know, you get a, a ticket to a ballgame or something like that, that might have a face value of a hundred and twenty, you can just pay the difference to bring it back under the threshold, and just remember to report, and I put the, a couple of the forms in this packet too, just to kind of keep that, you know, front of mind this time of year. If anybody, at any time, if you guys run into something, have a question, feel free to, you know, reach out to, to me or Vicky, and we'll walk you through it.
All right, thank you, any questions on that? For City Attorney? This time, we hear about consent agenda. Any issues with the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, move by Commissioner Aldrich, second by Commissioner Tender. Uh, City Manager, if you'll call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Moving on to new business, number twelve, discussion and possible approval of resolution number twenty-two-two, twelve-four-hundred, to approve the implementation of the Finance Department Policies and Procedures Manual.
Hello. Um, attached in your pack, it is the Finance Department Policies and Procedures Manual. Uh, through Vicky's leadership, we've put this together. It documents what we are currently doing in the Finance Department with a couple of very small changes, um, but we wanted to make sure that we have everything in a documented form, so we're not relying on institutional knowledge, and we can present this to any and all granting agencies who may request it. Um, Commissioner Warwick did find a typo on page twenty-six that I'll be changing. It's in paragraph four A, and we'll be removing the, um, year where it says, "On or before January thirty-first." We'll take out the two thousand twenty-two, and that way, it'll roll every year to here. Do you have questions?
No, I, I think it's very well written, and I think, uh, the city did a great job on it, and it's, uh, awesome idea to do this, so I motion to approve.
Second.
We need to read the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Resolution number twenty-two-two, twelve-four-hundred, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lynn Haven, Florida, establishing a Finance Department Policy and Procedure Manual, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith, and reciting an effective date.
Thank you, there's a motion by Commissioner Warwick, second by Commissioner Aldrich. Is there any commentary from the public? Being none, City Manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Uh, thank you for working on this document. Agenda number thirteen, discussion and possible approval of resolution number twenty-two-two, twelve-four-one, amending the final budget for fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-twenty-three, and providing an effective date. Uh, City Manager, if you'll read the resolution, please?
A res, a resolution of the City of Lynn Haven, Florida, amending the final budget from fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-twenty-three, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
As you are aware, in the original budget that I brought to you in September, we had two million dollars for the Rails to Trails project. We have since signed a contract for four million three. This document, um, includes that balance that needs to be adjusted to the budget. There is a small amount of city participation that's also included, so, but the lion's share of this is funded by FDOT, so very little impact on the city's budget.
All right, any questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perno, second by Commissioner Aldrich. Any commentary from the public? City Manager, if you'll call the vote, please?
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
Discussing, discussion and possible approval of the proposed sales agreement to purchase thirteen-eleven Illinois Avenue property for future expansion.
Good morning, um, this city staff is requesting, uh, the approval of this, uh, the purchase of this property on, at thirteen-eleven Illinois Avenue. The property is located across the street from the Public Works Department, and, uh, it would serve as additional parking, um, for city staff, uh, that is working out of the Public Works Department. Um, they've outgrown their facility, they continue to expand, so this, um, property is definitely needed.
All right, any additional questions? I know we had discussion about this on Friday.
I make a motion, we accept.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Tender, second by Commissioner Perno. Um, any commentary from the public? City Manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Number fifteen, discussion and possible approval of task order number one, twenty-eighteen, RFS Hurricane Michael Lynn Haven, changing order, Lynn Haven change order number ten, extending period of performance for Tetra Tech Incorporated through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, increasing the project not-to-exceed amount by one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents, no change in scope of services. City Manager?
This is just our consultants that we use to, to get our FEMA reimbursements back. Currently, we've got about twenty-two million dollars worth of re, reimbursement. We just received about a two million dollar reimbursement, um, about two weeks ago. Um, and so, they are working on, on not only the reimbursements, but also the closeout of many of these projects. And we anticipate, we're hoping by the end of next year, that all of these projects will be closed out.
Thank you, any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warwick, second by Commissioner Perno. Uh, any commentary from the public? City Manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Agenda number sixteen, discussion and possible approval of change order seventeen to BGN Contractors in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, eighty-nine cent, and the city constructed portion of seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars to construct four pickleball courts as part of phase one of the sports complex rebuild.
So, I'm sure, as you all know, we've talked about pickleball a lot. Um, we've had several requests from citizens weekly, um, to install pickleball courts, so this is a good location for it. It would be just north of the basketball courts that are being built as phase one of the sports complex. Uh, we reached out to, uh, BGN, who's currently under contract for a price. Um, their price is, uh, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, and then to save some money, um, our city public work staff will construct the stormwater pond and collection and conveyance system, um, and that will cost us about seventy-six thousand dollars, um, to do that in-house.
All right, any additional questions per Friday's discussion?
Was that, let's save money on the three thirty-one, or?
No, the three thirty-one is BGN's portion to do the, the courts and the lighting and the electrical, all of that stuff. Um, the money that we are saving was, is to keep BGN from having to do any of the site and the stormwater stuff.
Okay.
Um, we'll construct the pond, all of the piping and endless to get it to the pond. Um, and the seventy-six thousand dollars, that includes, uh, the materials, uh, the equipment rental, and the stakeout, and as built by a registered surveyor.
So, is there an estimate of how much we might be saving by doing it in-house?
About seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars.
I, I wanna ask a question, because I don't remember what you said the last time. Did we look at Bel Air Estates? What was the issue with having pickleball there? There were issues, I know.
They're planning to.
Bel Air Estate, we actually met with them, um, last week, and we still have that in the plans. We will be bringing those plans to you in New Year, so there will be two small pickleball courts in there as well.
Oh, so there'll be two locations?
This will be, this is like the attraction for, you know, there's four pickleball courts proposed here, um, parking, um, you know, people from the beach or Callaway, or wherever can come to this, and, and we wanna funnel them to the sports complex, um, where there's much more room versus Bel Air, but Bel Air will still propose to have two more.
I know books are number one, and pickle courts are number two.
I think that's changing in today's times. Pickleball is like...
Yeah, up there, way up there, yeah. I have people coming, and they go, "Well, what, when's it gonna start? When's it gonna start?" I don't even know what it is, so...
Commissioner Warwick has agreed to, to start playing as soon as it's constructed.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to be the Lynn Haven champion on pickleball.
That's really great.
You're looking at him.
Have you brought your pickles yet, boys?
Not yet.
All right, any additional questions for Mr. Lightfoot?
And it was proposed a thirty-day, um, additional construction time for this, so...
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Aldrich, second by Commissioner Perno. Any public commentary? City Manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Number seventeen, discussion and possible approval of development order extension request, Alphabet Investment, two-nine-zero-one, South Highway, seventy-seven, Schlosskies.
Make a motion, we accept.
All right.
And she's here, if you have any additional questions, I think we, we went over it on Friday, so if you have any additional questions...
So, no, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any additional questions for her? All right, well, stay right there, 'cause we're, for number eighteen, too. Um, so, there's motion by Commissioner Tender, second by Commissioner Perno. Any public commentary? All right, City Manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Um, number eighteen, discussion and possible approval of development order extension request, DDJ Florida LLC, twelve-twenty, Ohio Avenue, Sherman Williams. Um, is there any further questions for the directive planning on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Warwick, second by Commissioner Perno. Um, any public commentary? City Manager, if you'll call the vote, please?
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and also noted that I did follow up with, uh, City Manager and, um, with Cecilia regarding putting that discussion for extensions on, uh, next year's agenda for either the first or second meeting in January, so, I know we had talked about, uh, Commissioner Aldrich, and I believe also Commissioner Warwick has asked how many extensions before they begin to comply with the, uh, the new updates, or updates that will be, you know, happening subsequent to their initial approval, so, um, that's something that we can discuss in, uh, in January as well.
Okay.
Agenda number nineteen, discussion and possible approval to award, be it number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash eleven, professional engineering services for lift station generators for backup power for HMGP Lift Station Engineering Services to Panhandle Engineering, twenty-five percent funding via Department of Economic Opportunities, and seventy-five percent funding from FEMA via Division of Emergency Management. Um, talked about this on Friday, um, any questions, um, additional questions for, um, Mr. Kittle?
Uh, this one, um, did we get bids on this?
Yes, there were three engineering firms, so, um, bid the project. This one scored the highest.
All right.
These are four generators, um, located at critical lift stations that really is gonna help us on the emergency side things.
Got it, say we don't want a poop problem, so...
Keeps it flown downhill.
Uh, any other, uh, questions for Mr. Kittle regarding this?
I just want you to know that I love pumps, I would normally vote yes.
Great. All right.
I'll, I'll bring you more.
Is there a motion for this?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Aldrich, second by Commissioner Perno. Um, any public commentary? City Manager, if you'll call the vote, please?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed. Uh, agenda number twenty, discussion and possible approval to award, be it number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fourteen, for professional engineering services for drainage improvements to Dewberry and Basketball Donovan Incorporated, twenty-five percent funding via Department of Economic Opportunities, and seventy-five percent funding from FEMA via Division of Emergency Management. Um, any questions for, uh, Mr. Lightfoot on this? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Warwick, second by Commissioner Aldrich. Uh, any commentary from the public? City Manager, if you'll call the vote, please?
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, motion passed, thank you. This time, we have a discussion about the draft ordinance relating to the Charter Review Committee, um, revised referendum questions. City Attorney?
Right, I know CJ emailed this out to you guys, uh, yesterday. After our last meeting, we reconvened the, uh, Review Committee, I know Mr. Heinz is here as well, um, I think it was Friday, December second, uh, to kind of implement the consolidation that was discussed by the commission, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and so, what we, what you see here is, uh, basically just that, we've combined the eight questions, um, into four, and so, question number one takes, I would say, you know, more of the, the basic, non-controversial type items, um, and makes them a, a bullet point format. So, question one really includes, um, the, the Charter Review, the background checks, um, clarifying the canvassing of returns, we do it at the next regular meeting, and, um, just your general formatting and grammatical revisions, that used to be question eight, so that, that would be one question. Um, I know we had a little bit of discussion whether we were gonna go forward with background checks or not in the charter, the Review Committee decided, you know, that was their recommendation, so let's leave it in here for now. Obviously, I mean, you guys have the ultimate, you know, say-so on that when we move forward with an ordinance, um, so there's a little discussion on that. We left the term limits, um, as a standalone question, uh, making it two consecutive four-year terms. Um, I know we did discuss, you know, putting some language in there requiring a two-year gap. Uh, the thought there would be, we could have that in the actual red line of the charter, um, but we wanted to keep the ballot question as concise as possible without getting too wordy in there, but, um, so that'd be two consecutive four-year terms, um, as Commissioner and, and as Mayor. We left the compensation question, um, as a standalone question. And then, the, um, what's the new question for on, on the back of that page? We talked about breaking it up into two, but after meeting with the committee, there was a... breaking it up into two, but after meeting with the committee, there was a section in there that they just decided, let's remove it. So again, we kind of streamlined this one as well and made it a little more, I think, easier to read and comprehend. So I mean, that's, that's the gist of it there. We just try to get it as concise as possible for the ballot. And then if you guys don't have any, you know, changes right now, I'll put this in ordinance format, and we can have a first reading in January.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hines, do you have any comments regarding the updated referendum questions for us? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion regarding, regarding the referendum questions? I know we wanted them made a little more concise, some bullet pointed. Is everyone satisfied with these referendum questions?
Actually, I have a question on, on number two, on referendum question two. It says here, and I just want to make sure that the legal lingo is correct, and I'm sure it is. But we have here that a commissioner not exceed a total of two consecutive four-year terms, not inclusive of a partial term, plus two consecutive terms as a mayor. If passed, this amendment will create a term limit of two consecutive four-year terms for any commissioner. So is it just an understood that after two consecutive terms and taking time off that you can run again? Because the language almost makes it sound again like you have two consecutive terms, and then that's, you're termed out. So I just want to make sure, because I know when we had the discussions, it was two terms, and then you could run for another seat or wait four years.
Right. Because I know we went back and forth where it was going to be like a lifetime, and then, you know, by putting consecutive in there, yeah, that'd be the, and again, I think in the actual charter itself, we'll have, you know, there's got to be a minimum of a two-year absence, however we want to word it.
I just think the majority of people will probably read that and think you're two terms and you're out. But their interpretation of it's not our issue. I just want to make sure that the language was correct in that. Thank you.
I think that one's going to be very important for people to vote that. Yeah. So basically, what this says, two terms, you got to be off for two.
At least two years.
A minimum, yes.
Minimum of two, and then you could rerun.
Right.
Is there anything about?
I don't think that's what this, I don't think this says that. I think that's what we're going to insert into the charter is the two-year part.
Well, yeah, as far as adding, adding language that says you got to be gone for two years, I think we can, we'll put that in the charter document itself.
Okay.
But, you know, for the ballot question, I didn't know if we wanted to expand all that.
We want to make it easy for people to understand more than anything. They all think these are trick, trick questions. They do. When I look at the referendum questions, I go, oh, my God, am I voting yes or no? And it shall not be and all that kind of thing. So you can, can you run two years, I mean, if we propose it, if you run a two, four-year term limit, you can't then step in and try to vote or try to get in another person's chair?
The way, the way this is reading, that's what it says.
Yeah, I mean, the right way. If you do two consecutive four-year terms, then you've got to be out of office.
Out of office completely. You can't run for a different chair.
After two years, you could.
After two years.
Right. And maybe we can add some, you know, another sentence to the bottom, you know, just for the ballot language to clarify that, that this is not a lifetime term limit. I mean, I think that was what the discussion is. Are we, you get eight years in your lifetime or is it just?
Two consecutive terms.
Eight-year blocks.
And the reason there's, there's always going to be a two-year gap, it doesn't even have to be said really, is because the terms stagger. So there wouldn't be an election for that person to run in for two years after they're done.
But like I said, maybe on the ballot question, we can just add a sentence, you know, to clarify this is not a, you know, it's not a lifetime, and we can wordsmith it a little bit, but so people will understand.
So if this, if, okay, so we get it worded exactly like what you're saying, in January? Or when is, when are we up?
April. Y'all are, y'all are not up this time. So y'all are not up this time. This side is up.
We're not up for election.
Right, I realize that. So, but what this says, deadline for running is February twelfth? I've served two four-year terms. What if I wanted to run for mayor?
You can run for mayor. You can do two consecutive terms as commissioner and two consecutive terms as mayor. There's no problem with that. It's just a matter of, you can't do twelve straight years as a commissioner.
Who would want to?
It's been done. I mean.
Oh, yeah, it's been done.
All right. So are there any additional comments regarding the referendum questions before he puts them?
So if I understand this right, everything that was already on here before is on here with the exception of the unexcused absences, right?
Correct, because that was already in the code of ordinances.
And then he's re-shaped or reworded question number two to fit what we were discussing?
Right. There's two things I wanted to discuss. I know we're trying to do one of those down, but I think they're important. I remember I brought this up when I was a resident, but remember, we went in a situation where we didn't have a mayor and we only had ten days to figure it out. And it kind of put us in a bind. It kind of put us in a corner. And I think it needs to be changed so that we have some more flexibility in case, not that I foresee anything happening to you, but if something were to happen, that we don't get put in that corner again.
Right. Mr. Hines, if you could come up, please?
Don't we currently have mayor pro temp?
He's talking about filling, he's talking about filling, well, yeah.
The mayor.
Mayor pro temp. About filling an actual vacancy.
Was there any feedback or discussion from the committee on this, on this matter?
No, because we gave you twelve months to do this. We came up with nine meetings, and we came up with eight items, and someone told me it needed to be more simple. So we divorced it all, read it all, rewritten it all. We came up with four questions, basically, because we want to get this thing passed.
I understand.
If we start adding on all this verbiage, we're going to make more confusion for everybody else. And the state law says you have ten days to get a mayor in a mayor's absence, or the governor will sign one. It says he may. It don't say he have to.
Right.
And that's the only dilemma in that issue. The governor is supposed to step in and say, I'm going to make commission number three the mayor until you have a next election? That's the way it'd be handled. So we saw no reason to get into that for the city. It's already in state law saying it may be done by the mayor. If it's not done by the governor, then that's when we have a dilemma.
And I'll say this, I appreciate everything you've done with this. I know this is a lot of work, and it seems like we're tearing it apart after you guys did all that stuff. And that's not what we're trying to do here. I think what it is, it's been so long since it's been done, it's harder. And I commend you guys for doing the five-year review, because I think this is going to make it a lot easier in the future, because the whole idea is for these things not to change very often. And so you see the position that we're in. When you have to change a lot of things at one time, it makes it more difficult. So I, I appreciate it.
We can't do fifty years worth of work in, you know, one year. So we wanted to give you something to hold on to, and then within the next five years, you have different commissioners, and they come up with a different idea, and then you can bring up the other problems.
Right.
But right now, we're trying to solve the problem of now, not the problem of the future. Anything else?
Any other?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
This, this, now this document or this, this set of questions, it still includes everything you had when you had eight questions.
Yes, sir.
Well, except for the unexcused.
We just reworded and dropped one hour's issue.
The penalty for skipping three meetings, because that's already in our code.
Yeah. It's already in your order, so we decided we didn't need to put it in that document.
But it, it does look a lot, a lot clearer.
What else were we trying to do? What you, what you asked us to do? Simplify.
It was, it was, it was done well, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Anything else?
So the last thing I had, I know we discussed it a little bit at the workshop, but I still feel that the city clerk position needs to fall under the commission. I've said what I said the last workshop. I don't know if we can vote on it now, if we got to wait till the one in January, but I would like to add that one.
Do I have a city clerk?
So.
That'd be creating, creating a separate city clerk as a charter officer.
That falls under the commission.
Well, that'd be a charter, yeah. A charter officer reports to the commission.
Yes.
All right. Any feedback?
We did talk about, we discussed that in the committees.
We discussed it. The knowledge of the city manager is held with the city manager. The city manager already works for the commission. She don't, she don't work for, she works for the commission. So if you want an assistant city manager to work for the commission, that means the city managers don't have any authority over the assistant city manager.
Well, it's not assistant city manager. It's a city clerk.
Same thing.
No, no, no. It's totally, deputy clerk is totally different.
Regardless of the name you call it, it's the same thing. Either she going to work for you or she going to work for her. Which one is it going to be?
It's not assistant city manager.
I think what he's speaking of is the principle, which is the deputy clerk would still have some of, whatever title we call it, deputy clerk or assistant city manager. Let's say deputy clerk. If they're working for the commission, that's the principle he's alluding to, is that then that, then the city manager has no authority over that particular position.
Correct.
They're kind of a check and balance.
It's no two-headed horse. It's only one head of the horse. Okay? So if you want to break the four legs up and have the horse go in one direction, you can tell the horse where to go. But if the horse got two heads that they have to listen to, then the assistant manager or the clerk, whatever you want to call her, she will have a conflict between you and her. Now, which one is she going to work for? You or her? She worked for you already. So if you want to have another person work for you, then those just have one of the positions.
The, the city, if the city clerk falls under the commission, they don't work for the city manager. They just work for the commission.
That's right.
So you want the commission secretary?
That's how most cities do it.
So, yeah, there's a lot of municipalities that do it this way. And I don't know if you were, were you at the workshop when we discussed it? I can't remember if you were here or not. But anyways, I'll go into detail what I talked. So I called a lot of, I probably called between forty and fifty municipalities to talk with the city clerks there. And I talked with some city managers also that, that do it, where they fall under the commission, and how does it work for them. And I've talked to some that have done it both ways, where it falls under the city man, because that's normally the way it's done. It either falls under the city manager or falls under the city commission. And there's multiple cities that do it under the commission. And, and the ones that I've done, where they've done both of them, it's worked very well. But the important piece is, yes, there needs to be a good relationship between the city clerk and the city manager. And if there's a conflict there, then it's up to us to figure that out, as far as what that conflict is. And if it's a problem with the city manager, well, maybe we need another city manager. If it's a problem with the city clerk, then maybe we need another city clerk. But from the ones I talked to, it hasn't been an issue. So, and, and the whole idea is to create checks and balances, because if you have a rogue city manager like we did in the past, then that city clerk, because the city clerk has their hands on a lot of different things. And if that city clerk, what, what's the chance of that city clerk going to the city manager if there's problems?
If you provide, if you provide some incentive for me, or if you provide, if the city manager provides incentive for that city clerk to go along with those issues, and that city clerk will go along with those issues.
Correct.
So if we're going to, I mean, we can say, hey, this is a difference of things, but if we're saying previously we had a rogue city manager, that person didn't do it by themselves, so they found other people to corroborate with them because there was incentive in there. So again, creating this position is not going to change the hearts of people.
That, that's not the feedback I'm getting from the city clerks that I've talked to.
It's not going to change, what I'm saying is, it's not going to change the hearts of people.
Oh, I agree. I agree with that.
That if a person is corrupt, if a person is mischievous, if a person wants to steal, it doesn't matter what we create. It's not going to stop a person from trying to do those things.
I guess my question is, what would this person do? We already have all of these positions in place. Do I let these people go now? Because now you're going to add a city clerk to do some of the positions that are already in place. We already have a procurement person in place. We have finance in place. We have deputy clerk that does all the ministerial, all of the, the agenda items, all of those things there. We have a budget person in place. We have a grants and contracts manager in place. Those, all of those folks are in place that you have approved and asked me to put in place. Now you're talking about a clerk that, what, what is that person's position? What we need and what my plans are is to appoint an assistant city manager. So if something happens, that that person will be in place, and they would report to the commission. So I just, we just don't know what is it that this person is going to do that we're not already doing.
No, you already.
What would an assistant manager do?
They would do, they would take over some of the departments. Those departments would report to them, and then some of those departments would report to me. And then we would just collaborate, because the whole goal from listening to the charter review was, they just wanted someone in place in case something happened to the city manager. Totally agree with them. Don't want to be in that position again. So I think assistant city manager is, is an order that will be pointed by me. That's the way it's been done in the past. A former city manager chose not to do that. The city manager before that did appoint an assistant city manager. So I think that's important.
Would that be a current department head, or would that be a separate individual or a current department head?
That would probably be one of the, one of the current department heads, because there are some that are very capable of that.
Well, then that, that makes a city employee quasi-employed by the, or answering to the commission, once you give them that title. Because they have, you, they would still report to them.
We'd have to change the charter to make it where they're reporting to the commission. That's what he's, that's what he's saying.
I guess that's my question. What do they do? And Jennifer, you can, you can speak to that as well.
Thank you. I think the, if the commission wants to consider this, you really need to workshop, and the city manager was on point. You need to determine what would the functions of the city clerk be. Majority of city clerks are ministerial in nature. They do the public announcements of the meeting. They make sure the materials are present and available for not only the commission but the public. They take the minutes. They are not into the business of the operations of the city. Larger cities may put a financial block over there. And again, you're bifurcating your government when you do that. So you have two charges to the commission, and it would be a balancing act. I personally don't think the city is to the size to bifurcate your government. And I think just having the ministerial function report directly to you is just a change on what's already happening. But I would encourage you to actually look at the duties and determine the pros and cons of such a change.
And I have. So from what I've seen in other municipalities, typically they do what you just stated. They do the minutes. They do public records requests. They got a lot of paperwork that comes in, like bids and contracts and things like that. They make sure it's all correct, and they make sure when it's all done, it's all filed away. I'm sure there's a couple of things I'm missing, but from what I've seen in other municipalities, typically the duty of the city clerk is pretty much close to the same in other municipalities that I've seen. And I, and I, and there's a few that do this, and the ones I've talked to that do this, they, they don't think it's a good idea, but they don't do anything with the, the financial stuff.
You have to have your checks and balances with your finance department.
Right.
Therefore, it is just an executive myster, ministerial function. So your comment, Commissioner, about they'll be able to be a check and balance, I don't see that through the ministerial function at all.
Not at all.
So.
Because you already have a grants and contracts manager. Once you guys pass, maybe whatever contract it is, then that person takes those contracts, those grants. Michaeli is that person that you guys asked for this year. She takes them. She manages all the grants and contracts. And so that person, that person right now reports to Ben. So you have all of these components, and now I don't see where, like I said, a city clerk fits in.
So right now, I totally agree with the way we've got things running. I think the city's doing great. I don't think we're doing anything illegal or unethical. I've said that many, many times. But you're not going to be here forever.
And that's where the assistant city manager comes in.
And once you leave, someone else comes in, and they change those practices in place. And that's why I think it's so important to have a city clerk that falls under the commission, because that creates those checks and balances in place in case it does come to a point where there's illegal unethical activities going on.
I think one of the things you need to remember, too, is that every policy we've been bringing to you all to pass, so now that person cannot change those policies before, there, there were no policies in place. A lot of these policies are in place. And so if that city manager, whomever were to break those policies, you would know that just from the policies that you've set and you have passed. So you, you didn't have those policies in place. But now you So, you, you didn't have those policies in place, but now you do.
Right, so, for example, like the financial manual we just passed today, they cannot go and change the financial manual, because it's by resolution, so it has to come back to the commission for that manual to be changed, because it's by resolution. So, it's not just something that's done internally, where the next city manager or the next finance director can go in and did that certain things.
Yes, and I think that's great, yes, I do agree with that.
Purchasing policy, the same kind of line.
Go ahead.
I know, I'm, I just appreciate you, you check on all these other municipalities like you do, I appreciate you doing that. But I know, we have a city attorney who works for all different municipalities, and I just whispered to him and asked him if he would give us his candor on the subject, so. I think, just another person to hear from if we don't want.
Thanks, Pat.
Hey, heaven above, everybody.
No, yeah, we, we've represented multiple cities, and, and what, what Jamie was saying is right, I mean, the traditional municipality in Florida, and again, these have been chartered since the twenties, thirties, forties, and fifties, it's always really been that way. I will say, I mean, just because other cities are, do it, doesn't mean Lynn Haven needs to. I think Lynn Haven's been sort of notorious for paving their own way, you know, as far as how we deal with the county, and we do a lot of our own stuff, that other cities don't do. And there's nothing wrong with that, and it's worked, I think this system has, has worked. And I will say, when you do have conflict between the city clerk and the city manager, the city clerk resigns. Almost every time that we've had that in a different city, they will appoint the city manager to fill that role as an interim city clerk, just so everything keeps operating, because the truth is, the city manager is in charge of all the personnel, um, and always will be in charge of all the personnel. And so, it's the city manager's job to get, you know, get those tasks done. Um, and, and, you know, and so, I mean, really, if, if you put this on the charter and said, alright, we're gonna have a separate city clerk, uh, charter officer, you know, appointed by the commission, you've gotta put on whatever their duties are. And I think, like Jennifer said, they're gonna be mostly, you know, we're gonna do public records, minutes, notices, agendas, I mean, ministerial tasks. You know, unless you're gonna add something, some more duties to that, um, it's almost like if it's, it's not broke, don't fix it at, at this point with, with Lynn Haven.
We don't have enough.
You know, I know, like, you know, Callaway, that city clerk is, you know, very experienced, well-trained, um, does all the procurement, um.
Because that's a good example.
Because they don't have somebody who does, they don't have a grants manager or procurement officer, and the city clerk does all that. And she's got more duties in that charter. Other cities, it's very, very basic, and they just handle public records requests and doing the minutes, and, uh, you know, certifying, people want copies of records, they certify the copies of records, and that's, you know, that's it. We're already handling all that, so, I don't know.
I called Callaway about that, I talked to both the city clerk and the city manager, and, uh, I got some good feedback about, they thought it was a, a really good system that works for them. And I understand that they're, they're set up a little bit differently than us. But this other one I talked to, and I, I don't wanna say the city, and I promised the lady I wouldn't say the city, because the problem that she ran into, that person still in that local area, and she didn't want any repercussions, or that person tried to stir some stud up, stuff up, but this person originally fell under where they fell under the city manager, and there was, um, some unethical legal activity going on, and she didn't feel like she had an avenue to go to, um, but somehow, they, they, they got it changed where she fell under the commission, and she was like, it worked so much better. And I understand every municipality has a different culture. I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm looking at what happened in the past, and I'm trying to protect the city in the future. Right now, I think the city's doing great, I really do, I think they're doing a lot of great things, but I'm just, I'm looking out for the future.
So, as Jennifer comes up one, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to that, all directors and in fact all employees are required and bound by our policies and, um, personnel policies to make sure that we remain ethical, and that there is an avenue for reporting unethical behavior. Um, that's, that falls from federal to state to local governments. Um, I, I mean, I was in a position before where I reported unethical behavior, and it is scary, but there is an avenue for you to do. And I would implore you all that our employees are trained on, if something's not correct, um, they have to report it, and there are avenues to take care of that. Because we will not be able to ensure pure operations, because we're dealing with humans unfortunately, and sometimes we make bad decisions as humans. So, trying to create a static government system to ensure that there is no improprieties. If you've got that, I want that crystal ball, because that would be amazing. But I think we do have the checks and balances. My worry with going and bifurcating the government is the cost as a citizen. It's going to be more costly, potentially. What I've done in my research, looking throughout Florida, is you get one, and then they suddenly want two support staff for the, the clerk. And then they want more, so you're creating what I call a second government, that's all. So, I would just implore you to continue to either workshop it and discuss it and determine if that's really of value.
Right.
And Jennifer, in the personnel policy, there is something, if that person did not wanna go to the city manager, I think there's,
Oh, yeah.
There's a process that they go to the attorney first, and then you, yes, yes, so there is a process in the personnel policy to do that, if something needs to be reported.
So, even if, even if we left it off, even if it were left off this referendum, there's nothing keeping us from coming back and marching whenever.
Well, no, because in order to change it, because it has to, it requires a, wow, oh, you're saying we could do a charter referendum, okay.
No, we could, not necessarily do another charter referendum, but what is keeping this commission from voting on that and suggesting we have one?
Well, we have.
Yeah, honestly, um, nothing, I mean, it, it just, you can either, um, I mean, you can put it in the, I mean, obviously put in the charters one way, but, you know, can, you guys approve, um, all the positions and, you know, job descriptions and things, and things like that, so you're right, I mean, you, you could, um, I guess theoretically do it, do it by order, I mean, I've never seen that before, but you could create another position and just call it city clerk, and, and put those duties in there, but, I mean, that could just get changed by the very next commission. It wouldn't be what you're traditionally talking about as a, as a charter officer.
I don't know if that'd be the right way to do it, though, would it?
No, no, I mean, it.
I guess one of my questions.
But you, I mean, you guys can create whatever positions you want and budget for them, so.
I guess one of my questions would be, um, as city attorney stated, many governments that have city clerk, city manager, however they're set up, that's, that was their first initial form of government, was to be set up that way. So, I guess my question would be, how many governments were similar to ours, but being changed because they saw the need for, um, a city clerk? And what additional duties that that city clerk have beyond ministerial duties, because the city manager has referenced? Because I looked at different city clerk positions, and some of them do procurement, some of them do other duties, so it's, it's taking the finance director and saying, okay, we don't need you anymore. We're gonna give this to the city clerk, it's taking the five individuals, five or six, how many work in her department? Maybe saying, okay, we're taking this from you, we're gonna give this to them, now we got, or either hire someone to go under that person. So, unless the person, again, is just doing ministerial duties, we would have to really look at, what is this person gonna be doing? Um, besides what is already being accomplished, so we get our minutes, our public records, we have all those things already done now, um.
So, I think there's multiple questions there, what was the first one?
First question is, how many municipalities, and I'm not talking about like two or three, but how many municipalities that are similar to Lynn Haven have said, this form of government does not work? Not talking about we had corruption, but this form of government does not work, or is not as efficient, and so we need to hire a city clerk, or separate the duties from the city manager to the city clerk, so that we can run more efficiently as a government.
Do you not think, I think that this city used to have a city clerk years ago.
So, according to, according to our charter, the city manager is the city clerk, and the mayor is the treasurer, that's how the charter reads. That's why we sign all the checks, is because the city manager also performs the duties of the clerk, which is why she calls for votes while we're doing city commission meeting. Because if you go to Panama City, you're right, they do have a separate city clerk, and the city manager doesn't do that.
Right.
So, the clerical duties are being performed, um, by city manager and/or assigned to one of the, um, staff members for those clerical duties, those ministerial clerical duties to be performed. So, is there a government, or multiple city governments that said, this does not work, it's not efficient for us, let's separate this into two different forms of government, or separate this into two different positions?
As far as city clerk that went from one form to another because it wasn't working, there wasn't a whole lot, I think there was only a couple of them. But the ones, I probably had about eight to ten of them that had done one form, and they went to another city, and they did another form. And so, they had experience with both, and those are the ones I really wanted to focus on.
And as, I would say, if I'm, as a city clerk, it would probably be easier for me to say, yeah, I would rather work for you all, because you're not here every day. You're not in the office, you don't really, you know, understand what's happening in the city every day. I'm not saying us as individuals, but I'm saying the five of us have other jobs, or working in other capacities. So, we, you really don't have an on-site supervisor that you have to be accountable to.
True.
So, if all I have to do is really get my work done every two weeks, make sure that by city commission, I'm ready with my report, then yeah, that's what I wanna work under, I don't wanna work under someone that I'm in the office, you're making sure I'm here from eight to five every single day, and that I have to be accountable to, to make sure that my job is getting done. And then, if I'm gonna get fired, then three of you all have to fire me, as opposed to me being accountable to the one person that can say, hey, we no longer need you here. So, just as a person, I would see that being the easier way to go, because I'm less accountable to five people than I am being accountable to one person. Because all five, three of you all gotta agree on something in order for any change to happen with my job. So, is that a lot easier for me? I think so, um, versus being accountable to that one person. So, I think that's the factor that, you know, sometimes we may not be, um, that we may not be considering as well. And then we also have to seriously take into consideration, do we have time to supervise another employee? That's what we really have to take into consideration, is do we have time, if we set up another employee, um, who's gonna be the checks? The checks and balances for the city manager is us.
Right.
So, then if we put a clerk in, who's gonna be the checks and balances for the clerk? It's gonna have to be us, and so, we have to legitimately ask ourselves, not just as this commission, as you mentioned, moving forward, is there, is the new commission gonna be in position to be able to have checks and balances for two different employees? Are they gonna be able to keep two employees accountable, work with two different employees? Our city manager tasks, we, we have task galore with workshops, with various meetings.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have to have those same things with a different employee, because they're gonna have a different set of, um, a different set of duties that they're having to do. So, not saying that we don't need to, you know, have more work, but that's gonna double the work of the commission. And if we're stretched now to get to pre-commission meetings, if we're stretched now to get to workshops, if we're stretched now in order to really be in collaboration with the city manager, now you have two different employees that you have to supervise, and to, to make sure that both of them are doing their jobs and being accountable. So, I think even from a practical administrative perspective, that just puts more on the commission, which then takes us out of what our duties really are, which is policy and procedure, and making sure that the city's running efficiently, and not so much getting into the day-to-day operations of what happens, which is what the clerk is gonna present, and so now we're gonna have to be following it with two individuals that are working the day-to-day operations.
And Mayor, can I just interject there as well? Is that, that's where, from talking to other cities, that's where the conflict comes in, is that the city manager's working, running the city, and then you have a clerk on here who do not, does not report to the city manager, there's no accountability. That clerk tends to do what they wanna do, and the city manager cannot say anything to him, because they report to the commission. Um, and there's lots more work for the city manager to do than there is the clerk to do. And right now, there's just not enough work for us to have a clerk in a place.
I was gonna ask you, if, if you could pick out one main reason why you would not want a city clerk, what would it be?
I think just what I just said, um, it is, I think it will be a conflict. Um, you're, you're really, as Jennifer said, you are developing two forms of government, is what's going on here, and it will happen. Um, because the, both of us will be working for the commission. And, um, you will be meeting with me, I'm telling you one thing, maybe this person is over here telling you another thing. I just think until we can all get on the same page, and I will be very honest, until this commission is unified and get on the same page, we really need to stick to what we know, and if that's something down the road that happens, it happens. But right now, this commission as a whole needs to get on the same page, be united, and then see if that's something needed. But the bottom line is, I don't see enough work for that person to do, and I don't see that being, um, you know, something we would add into our budget as, you know, it's something that would maybe inflate, inflate the budget.
All right.
So, at this time, uh, is everyone good with moving forward with the eight referendum questions that we have as presented by the Charter Review Committee? Mr. Perno? Mr. Aldrich? Mr. Ward?
We can discuss this more in January, right?
Yeah, remember, it's gonna be, it'll be in the form, it'll be in the form of an ordinance, you'll have two readings and votes.
I think it would be good too, to bring the public, get the public involved.
Well, I, I, I wish I, I agree with you, but how many people do you have from the public come to the?
How many people came to our Charter Review workshop?
That's what I'm talking about.
And we did discuss city clerk.
Yeah, that too, you're right.
We did discuss city clerk in this.
Yes, and you did, and then the last thing is, how many people understand city government at this level to be able to differentiate between the two? That's, that's part of the problem, you don't want to confuse your constituents and your residents.
Over the nine and a half months we did this, we had nine and a half meetings, and we only had three people outside of our initial group that came to the meeting. Two of them was regular, they came often, and one came in one time only. So, the city has proven what their intentions are and what their needs are, and I think the citizens have shown their interest in it. Mr. Walker, his crew first got started with this, we need to change the charter, we need to change the charter. He came, he came to five out of the nine meetings.
Yeah, he's done, he's done with Lynn Haven, so, he won't be back.
Anyway, so, people that came harping about we need to change it, then we got ready to change it, we said, well, come to the meeting and we have your input. Your person came to this, the least amount of time, so.
I know, we talked about that.
Yeah, everybody representative came and they participated, and we told them, go out, first meeting I had, I said, go out and talk to your neighbors, talk to your people in church, and come up back with us, and come together with their ideas, and their proposal changes, that's what we did. That's what y'all asked us to do. I talked to every one of y'all. I even went to her restaurant and talked to her one day, before we got started, and wanna know what your needs were, what you thought needed to be changed, or what you thought we needed to put in there. Y'all, y'all not remember me coming to talk to all y'all? I talked to you on the phone, because I couldn't come to your office and stuff. Okay, so I did what you asked me to do. Now, we asking you to do what we asked y'all to do. Approve it or disapprove it, yes, ma'am.
I think these, I mean, I think what we have here, I think what you brought is great, but what did, do you remember what I said, my thing would be? When you came and asked?
You went, I got this stuff, I got, I got written down, but yeah, I've written, I've written a couple of them.
My main thing was, I felt like the chief of police should report to the commission and not to the city manager.
Yeah, that's one of them, that wasn't the only one you had, though, that was your biggest one.
I had a few, yeah.
Yeah, see? So, chief of police not, not an elected official, so, you know, someday, he's gonna move. And Mr. Ward, we, I ran against you, I didn't go negative in the whole campaign time and all this, but my thought is, you trying to stop a thief from being a thief, and it's not possible. You cannot fix tomorrow with what happened yesterday, what happened yesterday is gone.
I know.
And I understand your premise of trying to fix it, or make it easier for it not to happen again, but it's gonna happen again. It may not have been in heaven, but it's gonna happen again. Tomorrow, somebody's gonna get in trouble for the same kinda stuff you're trying, trying to avoid, it's not gonna happen. It's not possible, it's the way the world operates, but I appreciate your effort. Anybody, you need anything else from me, I'm gone.
Thank you.
I appreciate.
You're dismissed.
I follow the municipal houses and study everything I do, I wanna say that.
I mean, and I think, I think one of the things, and I've shared this with citizens as they express, I mean, that's why we've created the review committee, and now the financial review committee, charter review committee, is that what happened in Lynn Haven, not that it doesn't happen in other places, but it happened under special circumstances. So, what we saw happen in Lynn Haven happened during a time when, um, the standard policies and procedures for any org- for any organization were not in place.
Right.
So I think that was part of it. We were in a state of emergency. And so things change when we go into a state of emergency. So if there's something that we, if we want to look at something to change, it would be what happens during a state of emergency. Because in the day-to-day operations, when we look at how everything functions within the city, everything goes as it's supposed to go. So it's not the same issue, the issue we're having in Lynn Haven is not the same issue that I saw on, I did watch that documentary, All the Queen's Horses, right?
All the Queen's Horses.
Yes, I did watch that documentary. So it's not.
Yeah, that's, that was old government structure because they, all the commissioners were basically the city manager because they all had a piece of the pie.
So it's, it's a, it's a different scenario to what we're dealing with here. Is that it, it happened under special circumstances. Whereas if everything was in a normal day-to-day operation, you would have someone that would have said, hey, this isn't right, this isn't right, this isn't right, and would have reported that. So I think that's sort of the, the tandem that we're dealing with is we're, we're looking at the day-to-day operations and we're improving those and we're making sure that we're putting checks and balances in place. I mean, the manual that we approved today for those, and I'm going to encourage citizens to go and look at it, puts in place very thoroughly to really create those checks and balances from a financial perspective to make sure that what happened before, as you stated, doesn't happen again. But I think that happened because it was under special circumstances. Whereas what we're talking about are really more the day-to-day operations of the city. And I think we're doing a good job of making sure that those things are taken care of. Other commissioners, other cities that I talked to, they do not receive a, a warrants list. They don't, the commissioners don't get the up-to-date, this is what we're spending, this is what's going out. And then that has to be approved by myself and city manager before that goes out. You don't have the, you can watch other commission meetings, you don't have your financial director coming up saying, I'm available to answer whatever question that you want to ask about the warrants list or just in general. So I think we've done a great job of, of moving forward and really securing those things. Now I think we just have to trust that we as the electorate or we as constituents vote to put the right people in place to continue those things, that we do hire a good city manager who then hires good employees to make sure those things don't happen. So some of it, you know, is a faith thing, you know, I'm not trying to be churchy, but I mean, some of it is we have to have faith in the policies and procedures we're putting in place and have faith in the people that we're hiring for these positions because we can't hold their hands. We can't be there with them all the time. So that's what we have to do is, okay, we're doing our due diligence. I think, you know, we're doing what we can to make sure these things are in place. But at some point, we have to say, the policies and procedures and operations, we have to let them do what they do and give them time to do what they do to see if they really work. And so when we look at this policy and procedure manual for finances, if we see it doesn't work within a year or two years, then we come back and we make amendments to it and we, we update it. But we have the, the things that we're changing, we're changing so much that we're not even giving it time to see if it actually works, to see how effective the changes really are. And so I think, you know, that's what we need to do is give it time to see how effective these changes can be, so.
Churchy, that's, is that a word? Churchy, is that a word?
Churchy's a word, that's right.
I wanted to ask Attorney Oboz, are we ever going to retrieve any of that 5.5 million that was stole from us? Will we ever get that back? Has anything been seized and why in the heck hasn't that guy been put in jail yet? Any of them that were arrested and pled guilty? Do you have any of those answers? I mean.
The people who pled guilty, I think the sentencing is going to be after the trial.
Yes.
They've already sentenced, they.
Okay.
And that is in.
I've not really been.
That is in forfeiture. I mean, I know that all of that is in forfeiture. And after the trial, all, a lot of that equipment, a lot of that other stuff. Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Alright, awesome. Alright, so yes, please move forward with the, with the ordinance, with the eight referendum questions and meeting adjourned.